The goal was to keep Heber City out. Well, like Eric says, we need places to put commercial. We don't, you know, we are the only place here in Wasatch County that doesn't have high taxes. Ours keeps going down. But wouldn't it be nice if we had some industrial, some commercials so they could pay some taxes? You know, that we have a little feedback and little... But this is where it's going and it's, and it is, you know, you can come every single, forever, but that's where this corridor is gonna come. It's gonna be industrial. It's gonna be commercial. Eventually, it may not be with you guys, but just like we said, that's just one mayor and one council member away. And you can have quarter acre lots. We could have everything. You know, I, I think, you know, you guys got a hard decision because you've got two issues. You've got business owners that you're trying to say you can't have, but we gotta find a place for you. But then you have people that are saying, uh, we don't want it in our neighborhood. Send it down the other side. You know, and I think isn't it amazing how it's okay for us? We don't want it in ours. I didn't want what I got, but it didn't matter because the county had to do what they needed to do. They had, the property owners had their rights. They wasn't gonna go to court for it. So I'm just saying, you know, these guys has went, I, I don't have a blink in this fight. I don't care if they get it or not, but I do think that, you know, here's a perfect place for commercial. There's not other place. You can't have it in the middle of the town, just like Eric says, out on the front or out on the side. There is no way. And, you know, and you get all these petition people from people that's not even the town. I loved the last meeting when these people came in and they're not even in our town. And did they wanna hear how they've impacted us as a town? Here they come in, they've vetted up to us and they thought, what, quarter acre, half acre lots to our five? And then they're complaining about our agricultural, our, our equipment. Wait a minute, we was here first and then they butted up against us. So why, why do they think they can come to us and say, wait, we don't like your zoning? We need people that, you should look at the people that's in our town and see what they say. I know that, you know, that trailer park has been a problem getting in and out. I have a granddaughter that lives out there and it is a pain in the neck, but all, everything out there is. I mean, getting in and out of that. And, and these guys are gonna have to go whatever they change. If they change their thing, you guys are gonna say, here's your code, this is what you have to follow. Am I right? Right. You're not gonna say, it's good, have at it. No, if they come and change their code, you guys are gonna tell them, this is what has to happen before you can change your code. I love how every, there's some that just seem to think you guys don't know what you're doing and keep insinuating that you're only gonna do some things. No, you're doing your job and you're doing a dang good job at it for nothing. So keep it up and just remember, you have two different issues here. This is all on zoning. Do we want this? Where else are you gonna put businesses? Because the airport's coming down on my end, so it's not gonna be there. So there's no other place in Daniel to have it. And like Eric says, they can't just go and say, hey, that, there's no trickle effect into the middle of town because you guys ain't gonna allow it into the middle of town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Oh, he called Shelley there.
You gonna call her?
We were here first. Isn't that what she just said?
Yeah.
We were here first. That triangle that you guys have got in the enterprise zone, it has, what, eight properties? Seven homes on it? When I talked to Paul Kinner years ago, he said, oh, well, I just was told by Daniels to find an enterprise zone. And so I stuck my finger on the map and said, that looks like a good place. I didn't know there was homes there.
So you're talking about this triangle?
The triangle, the one that I live in, the one that the shop lot's in, the one that Tricia lives in and, and bears. Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
He didn't pick that, the town picked that.
Okay, well, back when we was doing the Saudi thing, Paul Kinner told me that he put his finger right there on the map and said, that's a good place for it.
You should know better than that. We don't let anybody do anything out here we're not involved with.
And it took meetings. There was a lot of meetings to get that.
All I'm saying is there's, there's homes in the enterprise zone.
Yeah, and this is on the website too. You guys all know about, this is just the enterprise zone. Anybody need a copy of that?
The enterprise zone is just a tax thing.
It's a tax incentive, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It won't apply to anything that's in that area right there, right now.
No, but something could apply there. That's what it's there for. It's to increase jobs in these areas. The state will cut them a tax break if they set up in this area a business and the criteria, they have to meet the criteria, then they're eligible for a tax break in there. And so that's what those areas are to encourage development to move out to rural areas.
Well, the development's already there because there's houses there and horses and dogs and chickens and...
They're trying to fill jobs to keep them people in their houses, so that's all part of the process.
Eric, you have a distance on your highway commercial in your codes of 700 feet, 200 feet, pull off the highway for a commercial?
For a zone.
Uh-huh.
No, we don't have that. What we have, everything we have, again, we got from the county.
All right.
So this, you can see these, these little zones, the county's zone that. And so that's the one up here at the top end, this red zone that everybody can see here.
Right.
That's up where the Mike Peterson parcel is and up here where the propane place is. And so we have not increased the commercial zones. The county had that drawn.
And that was their 300 foot zone?
Yeah, 305, I can't remember what it is, but... I know the Trenell property, he had a residential commercial that was a mix and he gave away his residential to make his entire piece commercial. And so that one did change up on Little Sweden Road. He has access to Little Sweden down the highway. Does anybody else have any super questions?
Sure.
You take your name?
Jesse Mayer. Jesse Mayer. Maybe a, a lot of us would like to see the, before this gets approved, the council actually, or the planning commission come up with a map of a proposed actual commercial zone for future reference and that would maybe fix some of the answers of just being, because it seems like a lot of people are referring to this as a gateway.
There is someone who has people...
I mean, our, our land use and our general plan is from 2009. Maybe we can update that.
Yeah, we look at it every five year.
Prior to, or it's a little five years.
Yeah, but that one was adopted. So we look at it every five years to do the changes. So there'll be a little resolution changes to that as we go along. The enterprise zone, we just looked at that, what, in December?
So this was the state, right? This is the state that does enterprise zone?
No, that's, that's the county. We work for our county, Ryan Starks.
But as far as the city, the city has no general plans or commercial property.
No, we, we use these documents that I was referring to, the, the land use plan and the general plan. And then, and then we let the people that own the property decide what you wanna do with your property. If you wanna make a commercial, that's an application due in process. If you wanna build a house, it's an application due in process.
So it might help the planning board to maybe get ahead of, ahead of the game and maybe make a thing where the questions are answered.
Did they, if you're... They wanted to find out that there's an opening on the board?
Well, if this piece already fell in your general plan, this is where we want our commercial property, that would be the same.
It, it might, it might.
So...
Yeah, we, there was so much feedback when Heber City did that that we just didn't wanna build that because there were so many people at those areas. Matter of fact, they got moved to the school because there were so many people. And a few people got escorted out by the police department, so you think this is a hot, you know, it's a good one.
The thing that Eric's talking is, everybody that owns property has the right to request a zone change. There's nothing we can do on paper or anyone can take away your right to request a zone change. So you have the right to bring that, fill that application, bring that to the town and have it processed. We're not gonna tell you that your application means we're gonna give it to you because you've seen the processes, but you do have that.
But I understand that, but it just seems like most people are asking, where does this stop? When you guys don't have a way to kind of say, hey, you know, we've determined, this is where we want it for now. You have all the rights to come in and ask.
It won't stop. It can't stop because you have that right.
Obviously, but, I mean, it'll, it'll at least help you answer some of these people's questions about, this is our plan.
It certainly is another tool, you're right.
Because coming in here and we ask questions about this property and it doesn't seem like very...
Well, because the property that, that you were referencing, the property that we have been told is under contract to be, and that there's a zoning request coming, we can't operate on rumor. We can't operate on what might happen.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm asking because he says, we're kind of following the Heber City or Wasatch County's 300 foot line, or that's not in our council.
Well, nor can be denied either. You can't deny somebody's rights is what she just said.
Yeah, that's further up. 300 feet, they just ran, they just picked a line, I guess, I don't know, I wasn't there when they did it.
That was done before the town was created, so...
And they just drew this line and it's like, it didn't even follow the property lines. It's like half your property's commercial and half is residential, which, so from a planning standpoint, it was like that seemed arbitrary, but back then, maybe that was the request they wanted. I know along Daniel Road used to have the same thing. It's residential in the front and commercial is behind. And they wanted that residential in the front to be a buffer between the commercial zone and everybody in the residential zone. And so they left that first, and I think that's a 300 foot that ran down there, and Heber City changed that once that was annexed into Heber City. And I was at that planning commission meeting and they said, well, maybe your road is, is a better buffer than a residential back. So they, they removed that part. But if you go down to where the stone yard is, still in the county, you'll see all the displays out front, no commercial in that front, front area. Then of course it's residential, that's the way because that's what Daniel had them. But in the county, that front area couldn't be made commercial because that was their buffer zone. So for some reason, they had 300 foot stuck in there. Okay, anybody else that has anything to speak about the commercial zone? And I'm, I'm just gonna hand out a couple of documents here if everybody's, and then if anybody has any questions, speak up, so. Okay, so the zone establishment is, is, so we have our Daniel Town Code that says why we do this, the zone, okay? So this would be ordinance 2008-03, 03D, and so that, that also will be on the website. I don't know if you guys, you're welcome to take one of those if you want. I just kinda printed off some of these so you guys will have this information. The, the land use plan that we're talking about is composed of the plan itself together with the land use. The goal of the Daniel Use Plan is to provide a general pattern for the location, distribution and character of future land uses. The objective of the land plan are to emphasize flexibility with the land use plan while building on the existing land use pattern, place an equal importance on the quality and character of new residential neighborhoods in each area of the town while at the same time maintaining or upgrading existing neighborhoods. And bullet three, concentrate commercial areas along two major arterials, US 189 and US 40. We encourage revitalization by upgrading facilities, reducing traffic conflicts and improving parking where needed. So that's, that's what they've been talking about as you hear that in that land use plan, sorry, I'm forgetting all of that, if you'd want. So that has the intent of that. And the general plan is also available on the website, and so... And this is something I read very often, the general plan. It really, I mean, that's really what guides us. And so as we look at, at these, as these applications come in and, and we have, we have conditional uses in the town, we have a dog channel, we have some larger buildings that have been built on conditional use. And so this is the document we look at to kind of judge how we approve or process those So I'm just gonna get down to the middle of this one. The general plan is a compress, comprehensive approach coordinating development, natural resources and open space and such as a way to provide harmonious relationship that meets the needs for present and future residents and businesses of the town of Daniel. And then it goes through 10, uh, we tried to get that all on one page, we didn't make it. We had some on the back, it was so close, but we just couldn't do it. And so item number three, to foster commercial and light industrial development that will strengthen the economic base of the town. So that's in our general plan. That's item number three on there. Okay, so these are all things that the planning commission's gonna consider as we go through this process with, with all this, so. The land use plan, did I already give you that one?
Yes.
Okay. I have more copies here. I actually have the back page of that. That's the back of it. It talks about industrial uses in that one. Okay, now, we've done that. Is there any questions for me? From the commission, from the public, if we got? Awesome, motion in the room?
Four more items on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so how does the commission wanna handle this now? Are we ready for a motion? Are we? I see no more questions. I see no, are we ready to continue?
I've got a comment. Is it really in your interest, Mark, to have us look at this zone change tonight? Or I heard Eric mention something about lawyers and some 209 conditional items. I mean, you could be running into quite some expense here if in fact you move off of conditional use.
Continued.
Continued, excuse me. Your thoughts on that? Do you want us to vote on this tonight or do you want some more time to look at those
Really, really for him though, nothing changes.
Unless he changes the use.
Unless he changes the use.
So as long as we just used it for our trucks and the way it's being used now, it would stay the same, correct?
Okay, hold on, let me, go ahead.
If in fact he can on, or, or the previous uses were not working on other people's trucks, then that use changes and he would be in, in a commercial zone, which means he's gonna go to all that expense to bring his property and buildings up to code.
Right. But that's not, but that's not what he's doing here tonight. He's not changing the use. That will be another application. What he's doing tonight is we're looking at the zone change. He has to determine when he wants to change the use. It's the same down at my place. I have to decide when I add on. At that point, the county's gonna make me put in all the wiring and smoke detectors in every room and bring the entire house up to code at that point. I can continue with what I'm doing as long as I'm there, but as soon as you initiate that change, that's what...
Well, another question along the same line. If this is something that does get voted on and is turned down for commercial, is that the end of it?
No.
A commercial application could be made again and again and again.
Absolutely. And you see this a lot.
Well, couldn't it go to the board?
Absolutely, it could go to the Board of Adjustments, who's quasi judicial board, and they can overrule the council. Again, we're, we're voting on a recommendation to send it to council, so not to...
So Eric?
Yes.
So if you were to vote tonight, it's a recommendation to the council. Now, if we did homework and came to the council and said, we want to rescind, it would not be a done deal anyway yet, right?
Right.
So we could rescind at that point.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
This is just a recommendation.
And even after it's done, you can change it back to residential. I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's application driven. We have, you'd have, you know, we'd be going through the same thing here. Okay, here's the plan. Where does it fit in? Okay, yeah, residential, no, not on the highway. Maybe you could get it back to residential, I don't know. Maybe you could, I don't know.
But tonight's just a recommendation.
It is, but this board, I don't expect them to vote until they're comfortable with the information that they have. I know I've had a commissioner ask me for some additional documentation and I just haven't had time to get to that this week. We've had a lot of irons in the fire this week. But if, if they're ready to vote on it, I mean, definitely, I was asked, when will this be voted on? I don't know that, this commission knows that. So once they're comfortable that they wanna take a vote, that's when, that's when the vote will happen.
Yes, I'd like to ask, what is the advantage to you guys to become commercial versus as it is with a continued use? What is the advantage? Or is one way or the other?
Can I, go ahead, because you said that before about the shop, so I think that...
Well, um, I've...
Sorry, Mark, you don't have to answer.
You don't have to answer, I just...
I'm sorry, that's what I was like, I wanted to...
As you sort this all out and talk about it and all the, I just, I don't, I don't understand what the advantage to you might be, if any. If at any.
You know, the funny thing that started, it was, we called in, we were buying the property to the board and all of a sudden somebody said, why don't you change it to commercial?
I kinda remember that.
That sounds like a good idea.
Sounds like a great idea. Now it's like, oh...
So, but, yeah. And then as long as I used this, the way I, is to repair my trucks for my business, I would have to do all the upgrades and stuff, but, um, the main reason I wanted to do this is because of, it's mostly health reasons. I'm getting older, sitting in a truck is not good for my body, being more physical active and being a mechanic and being home and taking care of my business and not trying to do it from the seat of a truck is the main reason I'm moving forward on this property and bought it so that I could have a place that I was allowed to keep my business running from. I started in Daniels with a lot smaller size of business and I've grown to where I'm at now. You can really see the need to be somewhere different that's more conforming than right in the middle of the residential area.
Sure.
And I had that opportunity to buy this piece of property that had the continued use that would fit my needs at that time, and that's what we did. And now the commercial zone got thrown, change got thrown to me and I'm like, that's a good idea. So, so, um, if I were, that would be neat that I, if I could open a shop to the public and have a repair shop there, but I'm starting to wonder that my continued use is, is probably might be my better answer at this point.
With the continued use, I understood that it used to be a repair shop, so can he not repair?
It is for his trucks.
For his trucks, so that's the big...
If he wanna open up a commercial...
Okay, that helps me understand.
Yeah, so, and that's what he was indicating, that he wanted to open a commercial shop. And so...
I heard that the continued use allowed that, but only for his...
Correct.
Okay, so I was confused by that.
And, and, and don't quote me on that because it has not been established if it was only for his truck.
Okay.
That hasn't, we established how many vehicles were on site.
For seven.
Right. I'm sure that we'll be going through establishing, and this goes back, becoming and beyond as they brought these letters to us with the continued use.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand it is, zone change or not, Mark can continue with the use that's been there, and that's fine, there's no problem there. All the zone change does is says, this is commercial, we would allow expanded use if it meets all of the criteria that are in the zoning for commercial that were read to us tonight. And so until Mark decides to expand that, whether zone change happens or not, nothing changes. But if the zone change happens and he does want to make a change, then all of those other codes bring in and, or come into play. And so I guess I'd like to compliment Mark because he's looking at it and saying, I want to do this the right way, I wanna do it the right way for the town, and so that's why he went ahead and did that. He could've moved out there, started adding trucks, sneak in, you know, wait for complaints, but, you know, you'd have the problems you've had. So the question is, you know, do you want expanded use to follow the process, to follow the code, to follow the requirements, or do we just kind of leave it in agricultural? And I, no, Mark, well enough that I don't think he's going to go do all of this stuff. I mean, his property board is online right now, but he's doing it the right way to say, if this is commercial and I would like to expand, then I have to follow the process again and meet the code. So I don't know, is that pointed correctly?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, and this is just maybe a little bit a generic idea, Pam, but commercial real estate is always more valuable than non-commercial real estate. And even if he does not decide to sell that, his loan value on a commercial property will be more. If he uses it as collateral or if he uses it to finance the property itself, the loan value will be more as a commercial lot rather than as a non-commercial lot. That's one of the most compelling reasons why commercial gets established. Okay, anymore? John?
Was it, uh, the amount of vehicles, was it seven trucks around the property? Does that include what's in the building?
Uh, no, doesn't include what's in the building, nor what was being worked on at the shop. Those, those, that, that amount was established in their letter.
Outside and pretty much.
Right, by their attorney and their legal team. And so the town took that at face value and said, yes, this is, this is a continued use. However, there were some things that was going on on that property that was not. And I said, this, by your own admit, admission, this is not a continued use, you can no longer do this. You have to cease and desist. They said, wait a minute, we've been doing that. I said, well, I, I took your letter at face value, are you telling me you lied? So that, that ended that conversation and that use had to quit. So there was some things going on the property that they could not, or they, I shouldn't say could not, they did not prove that the town was a continued use. And so we, we should assist and desist almost. So the things that are going on there was what they established was a continued use.
You know, I personally walked over to that block and, uh, took a look at it and I didn't see nothing but improvements going on, anything to keep the dust down or clean the building up and bring it up to, up to code.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the zone change?
No, but that's all it was doing, was cleaning up the place.
I could tell you more than say.
I better quit, I don't like it. Okay, so what does the commission feel?
I would personally like to read the documents, reread some of these because some of these I haven't, I'm not familiar with. I would also like to look at the original document of when you, when the property was continued on the continued use paper, what really's supposed to go on there.
Okay, go ahead, Kay, tell us.
So, that, so I would not like to vote. What? What? Oh, okay, so I'll make a motion that we continue this discussion till the next meeting with the addition of the document for the continued use.
Okay, but I do, I do need to tell you that that document won't have anything to do with the zone change.
Oh, yeah. And you're right, I understand that, but I'm like, you're right, sorry.
Sorry, I had to get one more in, I guess.
Okay, never mind. I don't know what to say.
So, so, yeah, if that was the Navy's key, it won't be there, so...
Education, it was education, sorry, I remembered.
I make a motion that we recommend to the council do not change this.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second? Seeing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
I think there's a long awkward silence.
I think that everyone's thinking.
Silence, I don't think they're ready yet.
Well, I'll go ahead and make it.
Okay.
In accordance with Pam's thoughts, my thoughts are very similar. I move that we continue the consideration and not vote tonight.
Okay, move to the next meeting, is that your motion?
Uh, to a future meeting. I wouldn't say that we would vote on the next meeting.
No, I'm not asking for a vote. Where are you continuing it to?
The future.
That's a different motion, that's where you table it and it just goes away.
I would table it then.
And then it just goes away?
You can't, there are applications there.
To deny the application.
I would, I would vote sometime. I don't know if I'm gonna be ready next week or next month either.
Right, but it's a continuing thing, so...
Tell me how to phrase it and I'll say it.
Tell me how to phrase it, and I'll say it.
Continue this item to the next agenda.
Move to continue this item to the next agenda.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Are opposed?
Uh, no.
Still not enough, two votes aren't enough to pass the motion. Go to your fellows.
I was slow raising my hand, and we have to redo the motion.
You want to restate the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Restate the motion?
Continue this item to the next agenda, is that what we said?
That's what you said.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second stand, okay. Any discussion on the motion? No, no, no discussion, okay. Call for the vote, all in favor? There's four, any opposed? One, motion, motion passes, four to one. This item will show up on our next agenda in June.
To change it, come on.
No, to discuss.
To decide.
A little more, more of this. So, the commission will look at items, and so, they'll get educated up on it and read the general plan, and that gives them time to get familiar with it.
Do you want to start the next month's meeting earlier, though?
I think six is, especially for us working slow. Okay, thank everybody that came out for that. We'll move on to item number, everybody, if you want to stay, it's great. If you don't, just, if you've got something to talk about, well, we still got a bunch more items left. Okay, so we have the dressmen subdivision, and I didn't see him come in. Dressmen? Okay, I'll just figure you out today, they showed up and they're ready to start working on their road, and so, we told them, "Get going." So, they're working on the road, if you see some things going on over there. They're working on their road so that they get that done till they can apply for their building. And they are doing our road standard, that's what they're doing. So, they're taking off the maximal amount and replacing the maximum amount, which will be nine inches of road based on magnitude. Here's what the worst case scenario would do, so... Okay, item number six, the McCombs', residential permit. Ryan, are you ready?
You bet. Go ahead and bring both of these. I know what comes next. So, hopefully compared to the last few agenda items, I'll be quick. I said I hope, not I promise.
Okay, be quiet until you're ready, I promise.
I got it right here. My wife had it tattooed on my arm, so I don't, I already got that one. So, we've got two, um, I actually have a lot of homes going, and a lot more building permits active right now than we've had in a long time, which is a good thing and also a busy thing. So, one of them is the, uh, the Kuhn home, so I have a set of plans here for, take a quick look at. Reviews on this one are still in process because of the, oh, yeah, increased volume. So, if you recall, this one was in for a single lot subdivision a few months ago. And so, we approved the, no, we didn't approve the road standards. We approved that subdivision, and we had a discussion on right of ways versus eastwards versus all those other things, we got to that, that's been recorded and done. Soon as that was done, the application for the house came in, and so, this is the application for the house. Um, I looked through the plans, the site plan looks good, it seems to follow all of our ordinances and codes. Uh, the structural and plan reviews are still ongoing. And so, what I'd like to ask for is a motion from the town, from the council commission, sorry, since we're both here tonight, the commission to approve it conditional, uh, with the conditions that the staff report issues are addressed prior to issuing the permit.
Okay, just had one question, right, now the one that makes things longer, but... I know for good reason that there's some stuff in the code about how close driveways are in the neighboring property. Well, that one's been there forever, but now the neighbors are putting in a driveway right next to it. And so, is that something we need to look at?
We could look at the neighbor's driveway that's going in, where this one's been there.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Are they putting a driveway there?
I don't know, it appears like they are.
I thought they were putting up a new fence, but then they have, I don't know, 50 holes that are about six or eight feet from our fence, that just go around the perimeter. I don't know what...
I don't know for sure either, but it kind of looked almost like they're changing the entrance to be over on that side, but I guess we can just wait and see.
I don't know how that would affect this application, if they're doing, if the neighbor's doing something, they're doing it without a permit, whether that, whether what they're doing should be permitted as a requirement, and probably something that... We're asking for a permit. I'm curious, I have something I want to ask, I promise.
So, this, this address, so is Poppy Lane going to be a street? Is it built to town standards? Is it?
Yes.
So, Poppy Lane does not currently exist?
It exists as of about a week ago. It just got recorded with the county.
It existed, but not in name.
So, the Poppy Lane exists when we're recorded, when that finding got recorded. That's what they decided to call that, and now that it's imported, that's what it is. Prior to that, it was an access.
So, I am on board? He's on board from the county?
The thought was recorded, it's in Poppy Lane.
So, what's its...
They, they recorded, they made the name change with the previous...
So, what's its east-west?
Say that again.
What's the east-west number on Poppy Lane?
Thirty-one fifty.
That's thirty-one fifty-one south.
Thirty-one fifty-one south.
So, what are you east in?
No, we...
This is Utah.
Okay.
It has an east or west.
When, when we came in for the, for the lot line, the zone, not the zone change, but that, that was the address on the, on the application. That was the one that just got, went through all the county and everything else got recorded.
So, do you know where Joe...
There's no east-west.
He's across the street.
Yeah, it's, it's a, well, you don't have blocks in Daniel, really, but it's a block away from the gun road. That's why I wondered if that, if, if that mining was happening behind that on the gun road thing.
That's good, a lot of people call that the county gravel pit.
So, it's on the road that goes...
So, I know it's being abandoned.
Between, this one's got, it's between Grand Casper and Kid Bangin' Her.
Thank you. I've been here long enough, I know where it is.
You know, I guess I've been here long, too long. That's how we all find addresses out here.
Go to the dead scum.
A kid of blues making a lot of noise.
Okay.
So, what do you need to list?
What are the items that you have listed?
Okay, so, the items aren't complete yet, so what we're asking for is a motion to approve this contingent upon the items being completed that are found, because it's in review right now. So, instead of holding these folks up another month, as soon as those items are done, you move forward.
But it's, it's almost through review, we've talked to all of the reviewers, and they don't have any comments yet, except for...
They do have them.
Still got one over here.
Yeah, but almost, that's why I said it's almost through.
So, we're just trying, we're just trying to work through that. And, uh, so we've done some other ones like that, that haven't been put through review, or had some items that haven't been quite completed. Instead of waking, waiting a whole nother month for our construction season, what they're asking tonight is for you guys to approve it with the condition, unless you see something on there that, that's a red flag to you that needs to be addressed. I think most of the items that have been brought up have been addressed and taken care of, so...
Yeah, we've already made several changes to the plans, it's a request, so...
So, are you two down there ready for a motion, or are you still working?
So, you're leaving the trees?
What?
You're leaving the trees?
Along the thing? Yeah, but my wife wants to put in some ones that change colors, too, not all pine trees.
UPS trucks will keep them primed for you anyway.
Yeah, sure.
She just mentioned that, she didn't ask me to ask me that, but she did mention she wanted her trees.
Yeah, no, she wants the trees. She does want me to decorate each and every one of them as a Christmas tree, though.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
As a town collecting the energy tax, we encourage that kind of stuff.
Ryan, one last question about this plan. You said something about kitchens in a home? So, this house has two kitchens, so is it set up with a rental in it?
So, it will never, ever have a rental, ever.
While you own it.
Huh?
While you own it.
I will always own it. We are, we are, with lack of a better term, we are homesteading this forever. This is not for resale, this is for the family, and it will never have anybody renting. I promise. So, I believe the one is level with the lot bar? Why don't you have levels of lot bar, because I love it. That portion doesn't even have an entry. That section doesn't have an external entry rent. Somewhere else, one of them is level with the lot bar.
So, there's no exterior, so that even though...
So, in the reviews, that will be addressed, along with probably a few other things. I know the code review didn't have a whole lot, but I'm sure structures usually has a couple comments, I'm sure they'll be here, it's always got a few things, but they'll be, they'll be issues that get addressed. So, I guess we'll, we'll make a note, if you want to make that part of your motion, that's addressed or looked at, that would be great, and I'll appreciate those comments.
Okay, are we ready to remotion?
Okay, I'll make one. I move that we approve the McCombs' building permit. When it has satisfactorily passed all reviews and all issues have been resolved.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Okay, now, what will happen is if it's not done, we'll see this again next month. If it hasn't been completed, it'll come back here, okay? Something that isn't in fact, we'll just come back to the commission, and you'll be deciding that. Okay, super? Okay, any more discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor? None opposed, because there will be voting for it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was fun to sit through, wasn't it, until we got to you?
That's why we're only, that's why this is a homestead one, but I'm doing it like this.
So, it's got a second kitchen, and a party floor, so when you don't want to go upstairs, you can just leave it.
Okay, now, we have, uh, there's one more that we need to look at tonight, that's the Clyde residence. And so, I was going to put this just underneath the planner report, but we're going to take a look at this tonight. This is the first lot, you remember we did the three farm subdivision? This is the lot that faces Three Thousand South, so we've held up the permit in the back because of the road. This is the one that's on Three Thousand South that didn't need the road to go, to be completed. And I think we're looking for the same thing, right?
Yeah, basically the same motion. You see on the site plan, they're going to use the, they're, they're going to access off of the road, not Three Thousand South.
The what road? So, they're accessing off of the...
They're, they're accessing off of the new road, well...
Off of the new one that they're going to cut back on? But they're off, they're off, faces Three Thousand South, so they have the frontage on it off, built to the current standard.
So, they have their frontage on Three Thousand South, they're showing a driveway back here, and this road is three-quarter built or, or more. And, and this gentleman here is, and they're trying to get going, and he's trying to do the road finish, so... This one, this one we were able to hold up because there wasn't, um, he didn't have access. This one has access, they're just going to choose to drive down here instead of over there. They, they have access, so...
That's not a problem for them.
So, basically, we're looking for the same motion. The reviews, again, haven't been completed, we've, things have been inundated, and, uh, reviews are behind, I apologize. But I'd like to not hold the applicants up for a month, because I hope we're not a month behind on reviews.
We've really had quite a bit going on. Been busy, busy, so, but we have such a short building season here that, and yet, yeah, it just keeps rolling, so... Wow. Okay, is there any questions with this one, entertain a motion?
All right, I've already reached my quota for motions tonight, but I'll do another.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we approve the building permit for the Clyde residence with the conditions that it passes all of the reviews and all of the conditions found in the reviews are...
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Hundred percent, motion passes.
Was that a lot easier than the zone change?
Should make a go up for that. Okay, next item on the agenda is the planner report. So, let me give you this, see, we've been sitting on our telephones doing nothing. Yes. Finally, huh? You guys need a planner report over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Go on, you need one? You don't care, huh? Let's, here, let's give one to Ryan. Then he knows why I called him late at night.
Cause that's too much time you have left?
Pretty much. Okay, as we go down through that, uh...
No, I'm emailing.
If you have any questions for me on any particular one?
But I thought about calling you back, I'm like, oh, you're back.
So, as you can see, we have quite a few permits out, we have some ags out. We did have a debt come in today, uh, but of course, we don't issue, or we don't require permits for decks. Do we not require permit, or we don't require review?
We don't require permits as long as it wasn't elevated off the ground a certain amount, so... There were, there were some conditions on not requiring that permit.
Yeah, so this one's twenty-two by twenty-two, and...
I believe height was also part of it, that if it was above a certain height above the ground, we wanted to look at it.
Yeah. Okay, that came in today, so that'll be coming our way, and, uh, let's talk a little bit about, uh, Daniel Academy. Did, uh, anybody catch that one? Uh, no, it's still in operation, and what they've, they've applied for remodeling the house, moving two bathrooms and some bedrooms.
I think it's two new bathroom, or two bedrooms and a bathroom, they wanted to have.
And so, we're looking into whether that's an addition, or if, the claim is they're moving up from downstairs to upstairs. So, you'll remember they're working under a reasonable accommodation, which states there can't be alterations. So, it's going to be kind of touch and go as we go through that. They have had, they already have clearance from the health department, though, on subject.
They did, get approval?
They did, yeah, we brought that up, and Tracy had wrote back already and said that it's okay with them.
And how about the well, is that the health department also, because didn't you just have a single well? I guess they're not adding people, they're just...
That's, that's the plan they're on.
That's the thing on them.
Yeah.
Eric, you come to the health department on that, so, you know, my understanding is always based off bedrooms, you know, for that, and so, how does, I mean, I have a secret question, come up with Tracy and that, and what's the reasoning that pulled that off?
I don't know the reasoning, because I was under the same impression. I added some bedrooms in my house and ended up putting in a whole septic system for three bedrooms and a bath, so...
So, it's something not only maybe at this point?
Yeah, so, I guess we're not to the bottom of that yet.
Is this an addition to what they have?
They said they're moving it, is what he's saying, relocating from the basement to the main floor.
I would say that you would need to way verify that, that it is truly moving and not adding additional.
Well, he's submitted plans, so, and it hasn't been through the review yet. Well, he's submitted plans, so it hasn't been through the review yet.
We're, we're a little earlier, these were both far enough along in the review, I felt confident I could answer some basic questions, and that there were no major issues, that one hasn't quite gotten to the same point in the review, and so I did not include it today, that and, oh, I think there might be some other issues that need to be discussed.
I think we'd like to see that one before, I don't know.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I move that we, with the Daniel Academy, we know it will not be approved until it's come before the planning commission.
Okay, I have a motion, second, is that a second? All in favor?
Excuse me, what is that motion again?
Motion is the Daniel Academy permit comes before the planning commission, before it's approved.
Goes to employ the planning commission?
Before it's approved. Is that true? Any more discussion? Sorry, I should have called for discussion.
Can you second it?
I do.
Tom?
Thank you.
Thanks for stopping us, we need that sometimes, I give a little. Yeah, especially if you miss enough. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, motion carries, okay, that will come before planning commission prior to approval. Which is why they're on the report, so you guys can see that, and if you see anything you need to see, that's absolutely. Okay? UDOT's, on the announcements at the bottom there, UDOT is inviting everybody to come over, just take one of them and pass them on, they're having the meeting for the county wide, so a lot of local government officials, you'll be invited to that, they're meeting at Heber City at the nineteenth at eight-thirty AM, and so for two days, they'll be here in Wasatch County, these are the UDOT commissioners, so they'll be touring, they'll be looking at some of the things that we're doing here in the valley, and where, this is where we approach them with projects that we have, as we move towards these light intersections and signalized intersections, this is where we like to take the commissioners, because they, they say where the money goes through the UDOT to what projects, and so this is, this is where you show up to there and tell them what an awesome job they're doing, and we can get some more money in the county.
This for the general public, or is it just for?
This is for elected officials, so the boards and elected officials are there. I also, you'll see on the bottom of there, the Wasatch Aquatic Center, open house, again, for elected and appointed officials, ribbon cutting at eleven o'clock, and then at twelve o'clock, it becomes open to the public for the ceremony of open, open house. So, at eleven o'clock, you're invited to that, the aquatic center, and then at, from five to nine, it'll be, the pool will be open to the public. Okay? That's your perks you get for sitting on it?
You guys really are.
Yes, that's why I.
Okay, I'd, I'd like you to take a look at this, I received this a couple weeks ago, it's actually been, I've been working with this guy for a while, obviously, this is in February, this is kind of what we get a lot of, and I actually have a phone call from the owner, Jeremy, representing Terry, they just found out that their property is in the P-160 zone, as you can see, they've been working with Matt Evans here to sell the property, most divided in thirty-acre lots, so there's a zone change.
How much property does, does that, you call, one hundred and sixty?
It's not a hundred and sixty acres, it should be, because that's what the lot size is, but those ones below the gun club, where the Daniel Academy and that, that's also with the P-160, I think everything on that side of the creek is P-160 on our zone map, but we still cannot figure out how the county made those five-acre parcels in the P-160.
So, she's on five acres?
No, she has more than that.
I think it's about seventy, but most of it's on a slope about like this, I think there's probably ten.
The cut on the, you'll see them pushing dirt back up in the gravel, they found out that that was on Terry's property, so they've been pushing dirt back up there, and the way they found that out was he was over getting some gravel in his tractor, and they called the sheriff on him, he wanted to know why you called the sheriff, me all the gravel up by your property, so that's when they got the surveyor down and found out.
Eric, with regards to that, I heard that they reclaimed that, it's done as far as the county, with regards to, state told me that.
The state, county told the state that it was closed twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, it's a joint pit, Heber City actually on top of it.
And so the reclamation, you know, when I talked to them, they said that's because they're, they're wrapping that project up, and that's why they reclaimed it.
No, they're trying to avoid the lawsuit.
Well, let's.
There you go.
Longer than that, because the county put all those cement walls in along Daniels Creek there, because they encroached, and that was back when the lot ran over.
Yeah.
So.
It's an ongoing thing.
But they put the survey marker in, and the county wiped that out within about two weeks.
On Terry's side?
Yeah. It was interesting.
So, anyway, those, those are the kind of requests we get, so I'll be talking to Jeremy this.
I don't know why we built a swimming pool, we got that, too.
My boy swam in there.
Okay?
So, are they doing it for their?
She's on P-160. She wasn't able to read the, we're doing a rezonation for one thirty to lot.
That's what the call was, the message I got, they wanted to know how they go about rezoning, okay, yeah, this, this list here is from GDA, these are the current permits, those are the current permits that we have out, is there any questions on any of those? So, you'll see that they've all been assigned a number, we're working on getting a new system up and running. Okay, that's it for planning report. Approval of the minutes, item number eight, from April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Everybody have a chance to go over the minutes, is there any corrections or additions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, is there a second? You have a motion, Tim, seconds? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Absent?
I'm in abstain, but I wasn't at the meeting.
Uh-oh, we got a problem, we got three votes.
I'll approve.
Okay, now, let me redo that, motion to approve? Four, one abstain. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Item number nine? Motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Tom made the motion we adjourn, is there a second?
Motion dies.
Technically, that one doesn't need a second.
It's technically not. Okay, we stand adjourn, and we will, we'll break up into an individual to look at the eight-twenty-five.